Okay. It is six. It is six o'clock. We are assembled here at the library of the Grafton Elementary School. This is the meeting of Windham Northeast Unified Elementary School District, AKA Athens-Grafton School District. The first item for, as we do every meeting, is introductions. And I'm going to start with our single remote person at the moment. Krista, I'll bet you know that's you. Say hi and where are you from?
Hi, Krista Gay from Athens.
All right, from my left.
Hardy Merrill from Grafton.
Lynn Morgan from Athens.
Kathy Ciano Goodwin from Grafton.
Jack Byer from Grafton.
Jim Vazina, SAU Finance.
Andy Hutt, Superintendent of Schools.
All right, there we are. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I'm going to suggest that when Angela comes, if she wants to be briefly, she can, but again, we're going to encourage everybody to be remarkably brief because we're going to close this puppy at 6:30 or whatever. So, are there, is there nobody out there in?
In either? Either's no.
No, okay. So communication and public comment is done. As I said to everyone, Andy's report is online. He has sent you emails with that information. And I think it's posted anywhere, anyway, on the website, correct?
If it won't, it will be up tomorrow, at latest.
All right.
Where do I look for that? I didn't see it anywhere.
So we're, well, we're trying to build an actual page. It's just going to be superintendent's report. And then we'll just post it up there all the time. But what I'll do right now is I'll just send it out to all of you again. So you just have the link at the top of your thing.
And what I would suggest is if you have questions, y'all guys' phone number, just give them a call. He's going to be home shoveling snow. He'll probably welcome.
My boys are home.
Oh, they'll be, he'll be watching them shovel snow if he wants to. Right, so we are on to 5A. And that is the budget. I understand both Mr. Vazina and Mr. Merrill have chinned up some paperwork. And who wants to start first? Well, I guess we could start with, he's passing it out. Jim, and then we'll go from there. Is there a way to get these documents to Krista in real time here?
Have you sent them yet?
She may already have them.
Do you have them, Krista?
I have the budget.
Okay. By the way, I'm going to suggest that you turn off your video because your bandwidth is a little shaky tonight. Not that we don't like seeing you, but I want to hear from you. You still there?
Yep.
All righty. All right, well, while that's being transponded, or whatever the term of art is, why don't we start her up? But Jim?
Okay. One of the changes under consideration is the guidance position.
Yeah.
And again, right now, right now, we've put a placeholder in there for the guidance teacher. And I just want to review.
Yeah.
Teachers and support staff.
Connected to iPhone 7.
Hello? Is that you, Krista? Is that you, Nancy? Who's speaking?
That's my, um, I think.
It wasn't. I think it was some automated.
Okay. So let's continue to do the walkthrough here. By the way, which document is this? This is the?
This, I'm looking at page eight.
Is it this one? Or we got?
Yes.
Okay.
Page eight.
All right. Make sure we're all.
And I don't have the exact line, but it looks like the guidance position, which is in the middle of the page.
It's in the zero next to it, yeah.
So that's a new position that has been added in. And it's a, it's a 96,00892 with salary and/or benefits.
The 990, but yeah, I got to see it.
What was that? 892.
Well, is this, is this a different number?
Oh, well, no, it isn't. No, that's it. I'm looking at, at the.
I'll close my eyes and pretend that the $10 isn't.
Well, I'm not sure why it didn't pick up. It's adjusted to a different.
All right.
So anyways, and I will say, keeping in mind, trying to run a tight budget, but there was a negotiated contract for both the teachers and support staff this year.
Right.
Now, with the teachers, that means if somebody was on step five, they went to step six. And there's a cost as the teachers go up a step. And they go up a step each and every year.
Yeah.
The negotiated salary schedule, again, I don't know exactly what it was, but I'm guessing maybe 3%.
I think overall, it was a 3.5%. Yeah.
So you've, you've got additional costs that are running here based on work that you've done with the teaching staff and support staff.
Yeah.
Also, the health insurance, which is the biggest benefit, it went up 12.7%, which is a sizable comparison to previous years. So right out of the gate, I mean, you certainly are looking at substantial increased cost with everything. Again, I just want to say, not, not new with what we're seeing in our homes with the cost of oil, the cost of groceries. We feel, we feel that 9% inflation. So Andy, go for it.
Well, no, I was just going to say, looking at this, and because I was out today. So I was at a meeting. A couple of things. So the Adam, the restorative practice piece, that actually will be covered under the ESAR grant for next year.
Yes.
So that, those dollars can come out of there, just so folks are aware. Because he's split with PE and restorative practices.
Right.
And then this current year, the guidance counselor is a 60%, not a full-time. And I know Angela had talked about, you know, wanting to get someone full-time. But, you know, so that's, right now, you've been operating with a 60% for a while. Just so you are all aware. So that could be.
I think we approved that at the last.
We did.
Yeah.
There was some whinging by the entire board, but we did approve it. Pretty many.
But, well, not, for the guidance counselor right now.
I think that was.
No, for the 60%, we.
Right.
We did put her, said that was okay.
And I, I wasn't, I did not make that last meeting. But I would speak very in favor of that. I think that this school is going to benefit greatly from Miss Benet parent. And then, so, so I just, when you said you voted for her, I was like, did you vote for a full percentage? Because I didn't know that, so, okay.
So question, the 96, 992, is that at 60% or 100%?
100.
That looks like it's at 100%. So that, that's why I just mentioned it. That'd be adjustment.
And that, excuse me, just, because Adam, I just want to make sure that I've got this right because I'm going to change it now. But I've got the general fund picking up the PE piece. And 2137 found, fund picking up the restorative piece.
Correct.
Okay. That's all right. All right, so it's just the guidance position is.
I, oh, I guess, because I'm just seeing it listed here.
Yep.
So that's currently, this 49, 107 is currently coming out of the grant on this.
Yes, yes.
So it's not included in their bottom line.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. The, the new guidance position is at 60?
Yes.
My 60, yeah.
Is it going to be 60 for next year?
Angela is here. She wants to speak to that. I mean.
Hey there, Angela.
Um, I, so I've been thinking a little bit more because in wanting to have more counseling services available, I, as many of you know, the locally funded interventionist, she hasn't put in her retirement letter, but she is, that is her intention, is to retire. And she would like to still come back and support next year in a slightly different role. And so that's sort of something that needs to be worked out for next year's budget. And I just had that conversation with her, something that was not full-time. And I think that it, it could easily work. But there's quite a bit of money in the budget now for that position. And so I wonder if instead of having a part-time counselor, our locally funded interventionist is like a point six, and then we're able to take the, the point four that's left over and supplement the counseling with that. So it's.
Does she have a, does she have a license in counseling?
No, 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 I'm not saying that she does it. I'm saying that my part-time counselor this year would be full-time next year.
Who's the part-time? Well, that's 60%, that's three days a week, right?
Right. Oh, you're, you can't, you can't take your title funds. I don't, you can't use them.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's not title. Elaine Craigers funded locally.
All right.
Yeah, so I'm not talking about my title position. I'm talking about.
And Andy, I apologize. I know we haven't had a chance to connect over it. Maybe we should talk about that because.
So we're talking about Elaine?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that's who we're talking about, yep.
Elementary teacher on this schedule, Jim?
Yes, it says elementary teacher, yes.
A full-time person this year that is currently in the budget.
Right.
For 92,670.
So what Angela is suggesting is that apparently going to retire next year.
Yeah.
But wants to make, wants to continue working part-time. And so then to take the other half of those dollars and apply them to the school counselor. So you, so somewhere you're, you're, you're going to dip 40% on one of those two salaries is what she's proposing. Does that make sense, Hardy? Okay. Well, I just want to make sure I.
One of the things that we need to be focused on, Angela, and, you know, it's, I think it's hard to have this conversation because you're distant and you, and you haven't met yet. But, you know, we're, we have a trend line that puts us in a position where state compensation, you know, before adjustments for inflation and whatnot, are going to tighten down to about 3% a year for, for kind of a while. And I just would caution you to be sure that, you know, any staff, as you put into this, or even maintaining this, really are consistent with that gradual erosion of our, of our bottom line. You know, again, I, I don't want, I don't want to get it, 3% in a tiny budget is sort of hard to do. But the reality is that we do have this trend line. And I don't want, I don't want you to be writing checks that subsequent board can't cash for you. And I think that's, you know, what I would, what I might suggest, and I don't want to speak for other board members, is that, that you take, that you really take a hard look at the, at this recommended staffing and see, see if that is in fact optimal for you, given, you know, we're a school of 40 kids and we've got a basically a 1 to 4 staff to student ratio here. So, you know, I don't have a lot more guidance on that point, but I would at least offer that here.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's just something we need to consider, okay? Yeah, because going forward, each year, there's going to be a 96.5% of the previous year equalized headcount, which I'm going to show a little, a couple scenarios of what, what the dynamics are of here, of our tax rate. So this year, I don't think we have to do anything really drastic because of the surplus that the state has, which is $63 million, and plus, the surplus that we have, which right now is 300 something thousand. And we're going to have a couple hundred thousand more.
Right.
Probably when the audit is done. So we're going to have to utilize that. And that's going to, you know, some of that's going to impact the budget so favorably. And we have to figure out what we're going to do there.
And I think also, just being very frank, I don't know if we want to make a commitment to a person and then in another year be saying to them, sorry, we have to now cut that.
That's, that's what my concern is. I just, that's what I meant by, you know, offering a check, the next board can't cash.
So if I'm hearing correctly, we may, we may need to go back and retool this and look at a bottom line percentage taking off to.
What makes sense to take off, I would say. You know, I don't think we want to give you anything concrete or, you know, no percentages this year because we have, we have a little time here to get this really into shape.
Well, I think also projecting out, you know, thinking of like restorative practices that we've, we've invested in and the social emotional. I spoke with Tim Shuffleberg, who's the coordinator for early childhood special education. We've got students who are specifically slated to come here for kindergarten who have a lot of needs. And so while ESRs, we got ESRs for one more year. You know, that next year, if we're going to maintain those same supports, that's going to be, that's going to be an ask.
Yeah.
I'm talking next year, this time next year. We're, there's going to be an ask to maintain some things. So I think if we even think about tightening belts now, we, it's going to help next year is where I.
That's kind of where I'm headed, you know. I, you know, I'm the least likely candidate to be the fiscal hawter on here as a general rule. But in this particular case, I want to make sure that we're, that we kind of understand, you know, we have this, this erosion that's happening on the back end. And we just need to be aware of that.
I have a couple of questions. On the ESAR funds, have you projected or thought about the building needs here with that money besides your staff?
Yep, yeah.
But you can't take all that ESAR and put it into your staff?
No, we know that. And we have, we have projects that are slated for buildings. And, you know, the roof here is what, and a lot of it is, a lot of ESAR, when you look at how things, they have to be tied into COVID-related things. So one of the things that we're running into a big problem here is we put in the boiler. Well, we're not upgrading the boiler. The proposal was to just replace the boiler. So the state has said, how is that any, how, how is that COVID-related? You're just replacing the boiler.
Doesn't it include your air handling with that boiler? Doesn't that include?
No, that's a separate, air handling is a total separate thing. So, but they're two different, they're two different systems. And so, so if, and again, you know, like, I'm having, I'm getting pushed back a little bit from the state from things like, if we're talking about painting the building, right? Like, it's really hard to find, how is that a COVID-related thing? Right? And so we're looking at things like that. We did get approval, or not approval, but we got guidance from the state that security can be put into. So looking at changing our vestibules here and creating a security barrier and things like that. We can utilize upgrading fire systems and things like that. We can definitely look at, so.
My, my understanding, you know, the, the original pitch on the boiler, and so I own some of that, was that because the boiler wasn't venting properly, which is why the whole building stuck out, that, that we could make the argument that the two systems were integrated in such a way that you couldn't take one out without the other on. It sounds like they weren't buying that, but it was a nice try. The, they tried. The, but ESAR 3, which is the money coming up, that's all supposed to be, you know, fiscal plant renovation to make these buildings more, you know, safer in terms of disease-free X. But you also have to understand that it's an S U Y bolus of money. And you got some issues. I mean, we obviously have our laundry list, but, you know. Did you go to, did you, were you at the, at the high school tour? Do you go to that?
I don't know if I went to the high school. I went to the other building.
Well, the high school was terrifying.
My husband worked there for 10 years.
Yeah, so, so, you know, and, and unfortunately, you know, if I were, or this guy, I'd be saying pretty much every, you know, every, everything that you'd like to do is going to be at least predicated on what we get, getting in high school. So it's actually habitable, because parts of it kind of really aren't. So that's, that's kind of where that one, that's kind of a big issue unfortunately for all of us.
Yeah, and, and so we, we have a list of projects. Many of them have got concept approval. This building included. So, you know, we put in for a new roof in this, in this building. We put in for an HVAC system. We put in for the playground. I mean, we, so we're, we're allocating dollars and we're like, in some ways encumbering them. But we don't know the actual expenses yet because now we have to go out and once you get, you got to get bids on those things. And, and then, and then you come back and then, and then get approval. And then you can move forward on the, on the projects. So, I mean, I, I think the, we're trying to balance that. And one of the things we've tried not to do is to put tons and tons of salaries into the ESAR funds because of the cliff that comes. And, I mean, many, again, just at the meeting I was at today. I mean, many SUs and school districts have been using them to really deal with the emotional issues that kids are having coming in. And we all recognize that. And so we're looking at how do we pivot? Because the students coming in and the students we have, they're not going to be better at the end of next year. I mean, you know, we're hoping to have systems in place, but we're going to need to continue those systems as we go forward.
At least a year or two.
Yeah, so.
Is that part of the question answered? Do you, were you getting it?
Yes, it does. I, it seemed like you mentioned ESAR. I thought that was going to go into all this, the staffing here. And you, you mentioned Jack, four teachers. And I'm counting, you've got at least 10 here that are 100%.
Well, listen, I said, you know, we've got a 1 to 4 ratio that's a little.
So, so you have a kindergarten teacher, full-time kindergarten teacher. You have the next one where it says Elaine and is an elementary teacher. That is a full-time interventionist right now. You have a full-time 56 teacher. You have a full-time 34. And then it's just miscoded. The next one is a full-time 12. So.
Wait, sorry, which, where?
So, so I'm at page eight.
Yeah, totally. What was the 12?
I could have those backwards. So I just, I just, I just lay, they're both labeled 34, so I just called 1. Angela, which one's the first second?
I see you're talking about Vanessa Laura.
Laura is the second, first and second grade teacher. Vanessa, 34.
So you, so as far as classroom teachers, you have a kindergarten, a 12, a 34, and a 56. So you have four classroom teachers. You have one interventionist.
Yeah.
So, so that gives you five teaching staff in the building. You've got the equivalent of 70, 90% of a teacher for PE, art, and coral. And then you have 60% of a guidance. And then you have a full-time nurse.
Yeah.
And then you have a part-time school clinician. And then you have, you have a librarian. So if you take that 20%, you're just a little over 1% with your specialists. And then you have an admin assistant and you have the principal.
Yeah.
So, and the restorative practice person is paid out of the grant. So, so to kind of offset that, so.
By the way, not to interrupt this flow, I see something that should have been on the agenda. And it just dawned on me. And that, that is, and it may require a very brief executive session that, that has to do with a teaching position.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I completely space that. It was the, it was similar to the issue we had last night with a different teaching position. Something we discussed. After we were done this, I want to just quick find out where we're at on that.
Okay.
So without objection, I'm hoping people will have a very brief executive session on a teaching matter. All right, we're, is there anything else? Yeah.
I'm ready to just make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
When I looked at version three, which Jim had given us before, and now we have version four, the only changes that were made were the retirement went up by $10,000. And the tuition went down by $14,652. And the heating oil went up by 10. We agreed to bump that up.
Right.
$30,000. And you all can have a copy of this, just sort of.
Would you see if you can get a copy to Krista at a convenient moment?
I can, this is all Excel stuff. I can probably just.
Yeah.
Just read everything.
Yeah, that would be awesome and greatly appreciated.
The other things I would just like to cover a little bit is to educate a little bit the board members on how the tax situation works for Homestead taxes. And so I want to hand out.
If you have some time to explain it to Brad James at some point, it might be useful. Was that too much of a stat?
So what I've just done is put together various scenarios that could happen and what, what happens if they do happen. It just is sort of a little eye-opener as to how the tax situation works in the state of Vermont.
She can get a copy also, sorry to.
I'm going to send them right now.
Okay, I was going to say, Angela, this would be good for her to, to kind of get a handle on because she'll be dealing with this.
So basically, the constant that I put in here for 2024 is our current budget, which is $1,778,038. And the first column that you see here is the 2023 budget, which was $1,776,984. The equalized pupils that were allowed by the state and what the education spending turned out to be, which was $20,802. And then that left with a Homestead property yield of $13,314, gave us a tax rate for this school of $1.56256. And that gets split between Athens and Grafton, you know, at a later date when we put in the high school, et cetera. So what I did was first, I just took the same budget for this year in '24. So what I did was first, I just took the same budget for this year in '24. But our head count is going to go down at least by three and a half percent, which would be 82.43.
That's the equalized pupil.
That's the equalized pupils.
That's had erosion.
That would yield an education spending for equalized pupil of $21,570.20. The other kicker this year is they have something called excess pupil spending. In 2023, that was 19,997, but they didn't enforce that against any towns for the last two years. However, this year I'm sure it's going to be enforced, which means you take that number and that number will probably change because it's last year. They'll come out with a new one. The legislature will set one that will be taken away from the 21,570. And the difference gets added to your per pupil cost dollar for dollar. So that would make our excess spending 23,143.40. And if you have last year's Homestead property yield the same, your tax rate immediately goes up to $1.73.83 with the same budget. And that's a 17 and a half cent increase. So that's just one scenario. Now, what's been recommended by Craig Bolio, who's the commissioner of taxes, he sent out a letter on December 1st noting that since there's a $63 million surplus in the education fund, the governor wants to give a lot of that back to everybody. So the non-res rate is going to go down maybe by eight cents, they say. And what they're going to do for the Homestead rate is they're going to yield increase.
Right. There's a COLA thing they'll take.
So what they're saying is that they could possibly increase the yield to $15,479. So if they did that with the same numbers that we just looked at, same equalized pupils, the same excess pupil spending, et cetera, that would yield a tax rate of $1.49, which is seven cents less than what it was this year. So the question is, do they end up with a 15,479? Because it's quite possible that that'll be somewhat less. Because the legislature goes and takes a look at this and they say, let's spend some money here or spend some money there and, and they'll come up with a, a smaller number. But that could be the possible number there, which would be good news. And for Grafton, that would probably mean that with our C L A, which is not in this calculation, that's going to be approximately 0.97, I think, percent this year. Because, because of the sales that we've had in the last two years. And we were fortunate. We had a reappraisal. So it's not going down too much last year of 101. But this year I think it'll go down to 0.97. So what'll, that'll do is basically wipe away that seven cents if, if everything happens.
Yeah.
Now, if you go to the next page, I've just done a couple of wild calculations here. I kept the same budget, but I put in equalized pupil headcount of 72.95. Now, why I did that is Jim gave me preliminary numbers that were handed out by the state of Vermont the other day, which says Grafton and Athens combined with a W M U S D have 72.95 equalized pupils. Now, that's not going to be real, I don't think, because again, the law says it can only get down by three and a half percent from last year. But just to show you that if, if you put that number in there with the same budget, your education spending now goes up to $28,749.76. And if you had the 15,479, your tax rate jumps to 1.85 or 29 cents. So these things are very fluid. They, they can change dramatically.
It also shows that, you know, we, we have this assumption that our budget process controls costs to taxpayers. And one of the things this illustrates very dramatically is how much that ain't true.
You're so right. You are absolutely right.
So the, the last one that I've done here, basically what I'm assuming, this is like a 2025 number really instead of 2024. So let's say we're still, still use the same budget number. But let's assume that there's no surplus and the yield goes down. And what would happen is now we're two years out. So the headcount now goes down to 79.54 when I reduce it by another three and a half percent. And I still got the same excess pupil cost. So the number comes out to 24,711. But if the yields could drop back next year because there's no surplus at the state level, they aren't going to keep it up there at 15,000. They're going to drop it. If they drop it back to the previous year's level, you see we're up 29 cents. That's two years out. That's why long term, we got to be really looking out there.
What, what people that have been in the community for a very long time, back when, when Grafton was an independent district, may recall that we would have these absolutely wild swings in our, in our tax rates. And this was, you know, the, the great argument for not detaching, you know, essentially having Westminster subsidize us was that while we do get this independence, the independence comes not necessarily fiscal ruin, but it comes at a real, a certain level instability because it's a small, small school. And, you know, at a certain point, you, you're asking taxpayers to have a very unpredictable number. You know, it's literally crapshoot in every year as to what their taxes will be irrespective of what we do. And that's, that's, that's the responsibility we could think about over the long term.
Nice job, Hardy. And I agree 100% with your wanting to look at the projections to make sure you're in the right place.
One of the reasons I drafted the poor guy.
I appreciate just the, just the, what you just talked about. Very clear. And so thank you.
Because I mean, anybody, oh, this schedule could be used by other, you have a people through easily, you know.
Well, I, I think the, the issue is, you know, on, on one hand, you know, for next year, there's no panic. But, and maybe even the year after there's no panic. But you do, you do want to have, you do want to think about this and you do want to have some understanding of, of being ahead of it and planning as opposed to having, being constantly in a reactive mode. And, you know, I, we can sustain fiscal for actually quite a long time. But the, the reality is that we will need to figure out what it looks like, you know, in 2029, you know, whatever, because those numbers are definitely marching along.
Yes.
So I, I don't mean paraphrasing.
We could use, we could use some tuition students.
Well, you know, well, I keep on, I keep on saying, you know, the, the, the thing that, and we will have to have a conversation with the select board and perhaps even with our, with our local Realtors is we really need to make some effort to reach out and make sure that we're bringing families here and that the whole town doesn't turn into one large B and B.
Well, and the other thing, Jack and I were talking just before the meeting. I mean, I, I just got to spend an hour and a half on the freeway coming back from Montpelier. And you know, your, your mind thinks as you come in. And, and that was some of the thought process is, you know, I was thinking like, you know, in, when I worked in California, you know, we had magnet schools. And it was, schools would, would have a specialty. And, and it would, the purpose was to draw students to those schools. And, you know, and again, within, within Los Angeles Unified School District, right? You had school choice. You could go anywhere. But, but you were also drawing kids from other districts to try and come in. And same idea. And, and that thought occurred to me is like, how could, is there a possibility of getting folks together and thinking like, how could this school think about the future and how it might draw students? What, what could we do to draw students? And, and that magnet idea, like we've got a specialty that people want to come here to send their kids here type of thing.
We, we, we need a lot of education at the S U level. You'll recall I, I pitching having even limited choice and trying to do all that. And, you know, I found pieces of my head scattered all over the room afterwards. But it's the conversation we have to keep having.
I, I mean, I'm just, I'm also thinking about, we touch other districts, right? And, you know, the.
Yeah, we do.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't them is always, you know, a century on a banana peel just for one. And, and Green Mountain is two, especially lately.
So, and then it might be a conversation that with other superintendents. So, you know, Wyndham Central is going to have a new superintendent this next year. But, you know, talking with Two Rivers and, you know, and how can we make it better for students? I mean, that's, that's basically how do we make it better for students? But it's the same idea. How do we find ways to draw tuition?
Because I think there's no question the kids that are going to school here this year are getting a super education.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's something that we actually need to publicize. You know, there are, there are, there are national state reports that working on five year old information and don't understand what's happened here. And we ought to, we ought to be saying, hey, we, we get some first rank stuff happening here. And, and we should get credit for it.
So Hardy, on your scenarios, on each of them, you've kept the excess pupil spending at the same 19,997.
The reason for that is because that's all we know today. They haven't set a number for this coming year. They, they set that, the legislature sets that direction.
Yes.
We'll probably get that within the next two or three weeks, maybe.
Yes.
Maybe.
Maybe. They've been late.
But if we take the students we have now and budgets that we have, isn't it higher than 19,997?
Yes, right now it is. That's why you see the red numbers. That's the penalty we'd be paying.
The, the, the question is going to be both the, the state and, and, you know, the wedge have indicated that they're going to make this change. But you can't count money that, you can't count money that nobody's given you yet. And good accounting practices says you know what you've got and you need to start there.
But your current per pupil spending is more than $19,000.
No, it's probably up to 30.
Right. And so that's why you're paying a penalty.
You're right.
39.
39. Yeah. And like, you know, this is the, you know, the great story is to, we contracted grammar school. But, you know, the.
In baseball, it's called a luxury tax, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully we do better than New York Yankees in our ranking. The, I forget though, you're, you're a Yankees guy.
No, no, I'm a Red Sox. I'm a Boston all the way.
Okay. I, I'd heard a story about you and Biggie Mano or something.
Well, I was, that was back to a long time when I was a bat boy for the Yankees.
Well, see, you know, that makes you suspect rather than what you, Hardy.
Red Sox, man.
And I was a, I was a bat boy for the Detroit Tigers too.
Good, great. Good for you.
Just one game. Two for the Yankees.
We have to have a conversation offline. I've got, we have absolute baseball.
I have one last question on the insurance. What's the percentage of insurance that the teachers pay for insurance, health insurance?
You choose the 80/20.
Yeah. It is an, it's an 80/20.
And keep in mind, this is now a statewide plan.
Yeah, we don't have any, we, we actually had made progress in changing that. Then the state took the thing over.
And I will say this, the state, the state made the decision to take it over at a cost to us at $25 million.
That's right. Yeah. It was, it was, this was another one of these V S B A brainstorms that I, I, I can't talk about because it would involve crude language.
Yeah, me too. Me too, Ken.
Guys, are we, have we, have we beaten this? Do we have enough information for my superintendent, for my principal to get together and try to get something checked out here, Troy?
I, I'm here. Yeah. I'm hearing not a solid number, but I've got one going in my head.
All right. The, because we will need, go ahead.
When I was going over what I had been emailed, which didn't have this piece in it. It had par salaries at a zero. Don't we have par here?
Any par professionals you have here are probably paid through special education.
Right.
So they're, that's an assessment cost. So it's not free.
Yeah.
I just want to be very clear. It's not free.
Out of a different pocket.
When you, when you, when you look at your S U assessment, you know how non-free it is.
And that goes for the transportation of students, which was zero.
Same, same, same thing. And that's. That's that formula business that I occasionally push back on without any success because I still think we're getting jobs, but be that as it may. That's nothing we're going to change tonight.
No, maybe next year.
I, I'll be in the cheering section for you when we leave that discussion, Hardy. The, all right. So next meeting, we are going to be setting the budget and we are going to be approving the warrant. And if it looks like we need more than one, and we'll try, I'll try to get some stuff circulated in advance that meeting and just quietly pull you off. If it looks like this is going to need two chews rather than one, you should be anticipating that. Our town meeting is March 6th. You know, the deal about 60 days before we have to have a warrant out. We have not discussed any other items about that warrant. The only one that I was, you know, aware of is we need to tidy up the dates of elections for, for members. And we also, you know, need to decide if we want to stick our finger into the, whether it's called the Athens Grafton versus the Grafton Athens School District or just leave it alone. Last two, last two times I've tried it, that was bad. So I'm eager to go there.
That's, so just while you're on it and talking about next meeting, I know that we might say that later. But what are you thinking for next meeting? Because I'm worried about the, having enough time.
I'm kind of asking you that, my man.
Well, so, I mean, I, I think the 12th is like the drop dead. That, that is when your next meeting would be. The fifth Westminster's meeting to finalize everything for them.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure when we counted backwards, that, that's why we came up with the fifth for them. But there was cushion still. So I think.
What, what would you like it to be as superintendent? That's what we're going to do.
It's 60 days, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, but it's only 28th February. See, I always got to remember. So, so fifth is.
I'm just going to bring up that on January 6th, that's when I have my hit done.
Yeah. So January 5th, you're at AWOL as well.
Yeah.
And I'm not calling you up at D H to get a vote.
Well, hopefully I might even be home in one day, but I'm getting very mobile.
This is the reason why, this is the reason why every year I try to get this done in December. And every year it doesn't happen. But that's why. Because it gets really weird from about the 15th to the 15th.
Okay. So this is, this is where it is. It's not less than 30 nor more than 40.
So, okay. So it's not 60, it's 40. Okay. Then we're, then.
When is, when is town meeting for you all?
6, I think, right?
It's usually first Tuesday.
March 7th.
So the, so it's March 7th. So it can't be more than 40 days. And do you count weekends with those 40 days?
We count 40 calendar days.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I just hate last minute.
10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18.
Because technically warnings should not only be announced, it should be printed there. So it's really 41 days.
So the drop dead date is February 11th. That's 30 days.
Okay.
So you should be good with the 12th. I just, I wanted to make sure like, before we walked away from here. But, but you're, does that work for Hardy?
That'll be better, I think, because, you know, if I have it the sixth.
I got a truck. We'll just get in the back of the truck.
I know how to get online.
We've, we've done it, we've done enough of this stuff. I'd really like everybody to be okay, healthy, and all right.
I, I drove the next day after my knee surgery.
Oh.
Get, get, I'm sorry, here I am squirreling. All right.
Are we, are we done with this? Because I thought we'd be done this meeting 10 minutes ago.
Okay.
All right.
You wanted to do, you wanted to indulge people with an, an executive session.
Yes, yes, all right. And my apologies, but I, I am going to move that this board go into an executive session briefly to discuss a personnel matter where adverse, where advanced information would adversely affect the interests of either the district or those staff that may be involved.
And invite administration.
And invite administration to participate.
Second.
All right, and this, and you're off the hook on this one.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to shut right down and I'm on my way.
All right.
You all good on that? And you, do you need a vote?
Oh, yes, we do. I could do without objection, but let's have the vote. Krista, we got a vote?
Yep.
All right, Hardy?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. There will be no action taken as a result of our conversation. I believe the last order of business is the, is the director's comments. And then adjourned to the date we agreed on, if I can remember what it was.
12.
12, 12. All right, so director's comments. Krista, what, what do you have to say?
Uh, nothing, just happy holidays and I hope everyone has a, a safe and happy time.
Thank you very much. Hardy?
Same thing. Happy holidays to everybody and we'll see you next year, I hope, after my surgery.
Lynn?
Merry Christmas to everybody and be safe.
Kathy?
Same here, happy holidays.
Well, I'll also say happy holidays for those who don't know. I resigned my position as chair of the SU Board. There's been some health stuff that's made me make some cutbacks. I intend to stick out my term here unless people, unless it's popular revolt to the contrary. But I, it's always a privilege to serve the community that I've lived in for 30 years. And thank you all. So that's it. Our next meeting is on the 12th.
January 12th, 23.
At 6:00 PM.
That's my birthday.
Well, we, we.
That's my birthday too.
Well, if you're, if you're here, we'll have. If you're here, we'll have cake. So that's, that's your incentive, both of you.
No, it's a sieve, sorry.
Well, we'll have cake. We'll have cake anyway. So there you go. All right, thank you all.
Recording stopped.
Have a good evening.
Okay.